And next is Department Reports and I'll call. The Chief, Fire Chief.
Good evening. It's been somewhat steady. Most notable call recently was Inspector Fire went to Litchfield. Like to point out that we. Very skeletal crew. We showed up with about ten people to Litchfield, but I bet you ten people between Litchfield and Wales would be surprised. For whatever reason, one o'clock in the night, people just wanted to sleep, or yeah. We were there about three, three hours. One, one night, and fire was quickly knocked down, but we had the J-Spot squashed, cellulose insulation, all that fun stuff. Saved most of the house. Reverb. Uh, Tank eighty-five is back in service, yay. It's been out of service for about two weeks, get. Uh, so that's finally been installed, so. Pretty simple, the PTO switch and pump, pump water now off the tank. We'll be able to fill engines or whatever, uh, off the tank water rather than just gravity feet. Uh, very excited about that. Appreciate your support and use the ARPA funds to do that. I don't have the bills yet, but as soon as they come, just. Uh, tomorrow night, uh, all our SCBA qualified members will be going to the station to get fit tested. Have to do that annually. About twenty, twenty-eight of us. Um, Saturday, several members will be attending the Celebration of Life of Pat Reeve. Pat was a member of our fire department for twenty-three years. I came on in two thousand and five, so just when he was leaving, I was coming on. Be several of us going to pay tribute, uh, Pat's honor. We'll also be doing a last alarm that after. If anybody's seen that, it's the tier director, he's on the pager and. Just to do a last dispatch. Sunday, we'll be doing our nine eleven memorial, uh, remembrance. Ceremony, very short this year, maybe twenty minutes. If you're interested, come down to the firehouse, you'll be right in front of the fire station. Set up at eight, we'll be ready to go right at nine, hopefully be done by nine twenty. Depends if I issue those any speaking points. Uh, hopefully this will be the last year we do it over there. See what happens. Uh, Tuesday, September nineteenth, we're gonna be doing our annual hose testing and ladder testing. Uh, this is new this year where we hired an outside party to come in and do it for us. We look at it, you know, shuttle the trucks and make sure everything gets put on properly, but. Hopefully this is gonna save any back injuries from all the hose tests. We've got fourteen thousand PTO codes that we're gonna do. Make sure there's no leaks. It's a lot of work. It usually takes us several hours. Full day, but now we're hiring it out and having it professionally done. And that was all budgeted for this year. Uh, just as a side note, Fire Prevention Week is fast approaching. Uh, we'll be putting up our banner in front of the station tomorrow evening. About five weeks away. It's the week of October ninth, the Great Chicago Fire. Three K through second graders coming to the firehouse to get fire safety lessons, go through the smoke trailer. At following Saturday, it's the fourteenth, we'll be our practice with Sparky. Open house, and of course, we always do a coloring contest for rides to school on a fire truck. So. Busy month coming up, but just thought I'd put a little quick shout out for that. I did order a hundred smoke detectors that's given out to all first and second graders, so that's our way of getting smoke detectors out into the community. The last thing I got is, um, I've been, uh, given an opportunity to travel again. Less all paid expenses. This time it's not Miami, Florida. This time it's Tucson, Arizona. It's tough, but you know, somebody's gotta go. Instead, it is a little bit about cancer in the fire service, but I think they put more emphasis on firefighter wellness and. I don't know if you heard, but I, I done a, a full year, uh, training with the wife from Diabetes Profession. I think they're gonna try to be a guest speaker of this conference. Just have a little panel board and I'd be sitting in on that panel, uh, along with the Rutgers University staff that. Working with over the last couple of years in cancer research, fire service. I think last year, put it to the board for. Kind of a gratuity, but it's no expenses to the town, but there's like your blessing. Except that.
I make a motion, we approve Dan going to Tucson.
What time of year? It's nice in Tucson.
Feel so bad for him.
So dry season, isn't it?
I'll second the motion.
Chris made a motion and Ken seconded it to. Our Chief Roy's trip to Tucson, Arizona. I want those in favor.
That's all I have. Let's see if you have any questions.
All right, good evening. Included on the, on the report discussion item, uh. Why stats, total calls to service with three hundred and seventeen. Five arrests, three criminal summonings issued, uh, two of those summoners issued with disorderly conduct. Arrest was against E V assault. Uh, one criminal speed, one warrant arrest. One O A S violation of conditions of release arrest. Criminal mischief arrest and one burglary arrest. In August, we had jumped up quite a bit, went up four hundred and twenty-six calls for service, ended up with four arrests. And six criminal summons issued. Uh, three for operating app suspension, one O U I arrest, one criminal speed, ninety-five to fifty-five. On illegal attachment complaints. Operating without a license, operating an registered motor vehicle and one. Violation, uh, conditions of release. And we had a. Case with a motorcycle being asked on, they were like with the engine. Asked him back three quarters of a mile. And he was arrested for eluding an officer, O A S and violating conditions of release. Uh, Officer Zach Roy was hired as full-time officer with your blessing. Thank you very much. Started full-time activities on September third. That being said, on September third, uh, we went to twenty-four hour coverage. Just running four in the afternoon, though, four in the morning, then four for court. Other than them having base shift, having to get up at two thirty, quarter, three in the morning, everything's going smoothly. I, I included in here on, on page three, it's just a breakdown of. Time analysis on when the complaints are being filed in, and this is. Combination of July and August complaints. So seven hundred and ninety-nine complaints, and it just kind of shows you what days and what hours we're having the majority of complaints on. Surprisingly enough, there. Monday. Wednesdays are majority of the complaints coming in. With the times of between midnight, three in the morning, the majority of complaints coming in. And then the last, last few pages, it just breaks down. Um, again, when we went to our, our stillman program, our new R M S system, that started in June of twenty-two. And that's why when you look at the month breakdown, where you see January, it's a May, the zeros at the top. That's because we weren't on the stillman at that time. So every, all, all the records start in, in June of twenty-two. But for.
Chief, with June a full month, when you started it.
Yes. So as we go forward, I run my, uh, September report, then last September and this September will show up. So as I dress down too, you'll start seeing the accurate comparisons. Month to month on those. And. I'm gonna go through all of them, but it's there for you to review and. Where the increases are. With some pretty major pieces along the way.
Yeah, it seems like about every category. Twenty twenty-three seems. A, a higher number than twenty twenty-two. For just about every month. Care to comment, why?
I would, if, if I knew that, I would be working this crap right now. I'd be taking a lot more months. Yeah. Any questions?
What's the protocol when an arrest is made, seeing arresting officer take the accused to the county jail?
Uh, we bring them over to, to Winter and use their booking room. If they're able to make bail from there, but we might prefer that happen than having to go all the way into Augusta, but majority of the time we end up going to Augusta. And the prayer becomes problematic because if they have a scratch on them or anything at all, they. Jail makes us clear them through the hospital, so. On an arrest, we get, our officers get tied up two, three, four, five hours. Going to the hospital, getting them cleared, then bringing them back to the jail. We prefer not to, we'd rather bail them right from, right from Winter.
There's no coverage in town at that time?
Correct. The, uh, in, in the situation like that, when the officer is pulled away from town, the backup. Call officer, supervisor is notified and. We get, we get ready to go in case there is another call during that timeframe, and that happens quite frequently.
Uh, this week, we've primarily been. I have primarily been getting ready to send the tax bills out, so we voted the data into the system and paid the bills, and we just sent it off today to the vendor to get the proofs made up. So we expect those to hit the mail probably next week sometime, and then when they get to people's houses. Your best guess is mine. Um, just a couple of things. My schedule next week, the thirteenth and fourteenth, I'll be out, because I'm at the MMA's two-day strategic meeting that happens every fall. Stolen this year, interesting story. Next, and the following Tuesday, I'm at, um, the K V Cog General Assembly. Meeting, that's the annual meeting for their, they're gonna do for next year. Um, I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, I, I, I did want to, I wanted to ask. If, if you had any objection this year, the MMA convention is in Augusta. So I was hoping to send all of the town office staff there so that the new people, um. You know, can go to the different courses and just see what is available out there. Make sure that was okay with all of you before I hit that.
And that's on the thirteenth and fourteenth?
No, that's on, that would be on the fourth and fifth of October.
October fourth and fifth.
What's the due date for next month? Um, October four, is it the fourteenth? I think it's the fourteenth. Twelfth, I think it might be the twelfth. It's twelfth, it's right there. Eleven, twelve, yeah, eleven through twelve. It's about a month out from what they, people shouldn't be getting in the mailbox. But, uh, I, people who are showing up to pay their bill are not gonna be. Stepped away, because. No, no, right, correct. It's, it's after that. It's, it's before that. The bills are due after that. Yeah.
So they'd all be out on both, both days? That is out of the plan?
Yeah, so some of our neighbors started doing this, so like last year, uh, Reed Field sent the entire town basically up there and they put them up overnight and everything, um. I thought, because it's in Augusta, we're not gonna incur any of those costs, we just have to register them and they could just drive there as their normal workday and then they can go home at noon evening. It's not much further than here for both of them. So that was my thought.
Good for them to mind. Continuum.
Yeah. I think if anybody, if you have any questions other than that, that's what we've been doing. Yeah, that's what I've been doing for the past couple of days, just trying to get those bills. Corrected. Now, we spent a lot, spent a lot of time with Donna yesterday trying to, there was an anomaly, we, we were missing like two thousand dollars in. In value, it seems small, but it's like it needs to be correct, so we spent a lot of time digging through different accounts to figure it out.
So if you're gonna be out close those two days, I think the sooner we start messaging that and putting.
Yes, absolutely. I, I, I just wanted to make sure you were all okay with it.
People see it and.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep.
Farther out, they have the information, happy, or hopefully people will be.
Thank you.
Blackboard report.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to talk about briefly was, um, to thank Ken for going down and helping us get the new lifeguard students out of the lake. It, it's an ongoing issue of vandalism at the beach. Um, it's my understanding they have a plan to try to resolve it. But it's something that's happening a lot. Uh, we've had a lot of issues down there this summer, and I'm not sure what the solution's gonna be, but. Vandalism at the beach has been.
I understand there's been some issues in Winter too.
Yes.
Similar nuisance type.
By the end of the week, we will have cameras up. Yeah, just all the work and effort of that young man building those new stands and getting them set up on Saturday and. And then they end up in the lake. It's pretty discouraging, um, but hopefully there'll be a resolution to it.
We got, uh. I think we all got letters about a, uh, obviously Lake Association event, which is, uh. Wednesday, September thirteenth, Country Club, Coastal Country Club, talking about the invasive plants. I mean, I'll, I'll go to that, uh, what, I mean, I'm a member of County Water Shit, so, uh, I, I trustee. So I hear about all this stuff all the time, so it's nothing that would be new to me or, uh. But I didn't know if anybody else wanted to, uh.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, because I, I told Peter today that we had a meet, I was gonna bring that up. It's in my file that I didn't think of it when I was speaking. I told him that I would let him know how many of you wanted to attend, because they're just trying to plan for. I don't know if they have.
I mean, I've got it penciled in. To my schedule, if I can. Squeeze it that day, I will.
So two of you anyway.
What day of the week is September eighteenth? Wednesday, it's, it's next Wednesday at what time? At, uh, from five to seven. Because you got Country Club.
You think you'll go, Joe, or not sure yet?
I think I'll go. I'll put it on my calendar.
I'll start making.
I'll say.
I asked, um, Justin to distribute the cannabis survey results from the Economic Development Committee one more time because. I wanted to say a few things, uh. About it. It seems, and, uh, I'm not sure that Reagan put this into her memo that's in front of us right now. It seems, uh, that there was a significant pattern in the survey. Results in that, um, the online responses, uh, seem much more negative than the paper responses. And the way that, uh, our survey was posted on Facebook. Didn't ask folks to. Verify in any way that they were, uh, from town, that they were a registered voter, that they were. Uh, even, uh, uh, giving only one response. And it's also interesting to note that. The paper responses, which were distributed one at a time in front of a person or person to person at the voting. Uh, polling booth or polling place. Uh, the paper responses, uh, were half of the number of responses versus the, that of online. And so. My question for this board is, number one, perhaps we should rethink about whether we are willing to accept online responses. Uh, when we are formulating our. Policies based on a survey that is. Questionable. And, uh, and then secondly, uh, whether we might reconsider doing this survey. Uh, in November. Using Facebook as a means for advertising the survey and generating conversation if people would like to have a conversation about what's being discussed. Uh, perhaps even using online. Uh, the online tools to print a survey off. But instead, uh, asking folks to. Make a personal appearance at Town Hall to turn their survey in so that there is some. Human to human interaction there, uh, rather than, uh, a, uh. Leap of faith and perhaps an honor system that, uh, could easily be abused.
I agree. In-person paper ballots are great.
There you go.
It is the state rewriting the whole, kind of this thing. Can I read that in the newspaper?
No. They're, they're, I mean, there are always proposals, there are always. Interest groups that have a wish list. And have a legislator who's, um, willing to put in bills and make suggestions, but, uh, no. I mean, I, I did read an article that there was a suggestion, they were trying to streamline something or other, and. You know, the fact of the matter is, any change in law would be years away. Legislature's not in session right now, and. And even if it were, uh, it would take some time and a lot of negotiation to. Figure something out.
It's, it's, it seems to be a lot of these businesses, is, is the market going to. Itself so that some of them, a lot of them are going to go out of business?
I imagine you're probably right. And I also imagine, uh, our Facebook, uh, survey, by the way, was distributed. By an interest group on Facebook. So that. Potential competitors from other towns. Could answer the survey. So folks with contrary economic interests. Could very well have weighed in on our, on, on Monmouth's survey of. You know, what's the right thing to do for our community? Uh, we don't know. It's interesting, I mean Reagan. Was responsible for tallying all of this, and I have no doubt that she did it in a very methodical and. Reasonable way, but. Her general impression was, uh. That the in-person ballots, the ones that are paper ballots where there's human to human contact. Were generally, uh. Sixty percent in favor of some type of, uh. Additional allowance. Whether it's cultivation or what have you, and forty percent opposed, and the online ones were something like. Seventy, thirty, eighty, twenty, something like that. So. Because there were twice as many online ones, uh, the numbers that we see here, uh, when you total them all up. Uh, seem to suggest that, uh. Folks don't want any changes at all. I would be hesitant to say that there's a whole lot of validity to that, given. The shenanigans that you can play online, impersonate or be anonymous or. You know, not be responsible. So I would, I would suggest, I would make a motion that we try again. With the November election, using exactly the same survey. Uh, and invite folks on Facebook to participate. And ask them to make a personal appearance at Town Hall to turn in their survey. So that the clerks can. At least, I mean, we don't need to. Go to a huge amount of security, but if someone shows up and. They show up seventeen times, then, uh, I think we might know that there's. You know. Shenanigans going on.
What if they choose to put them in the clutter box outside? There's no way you can stop that, because there is a spot. Outside to drop them in the clutter box where people can drop payments and things, so.
Well, then maybe we should have them distributed by the town clerk.
Probably, the more barriers you put up here, you're gonna get very few responses.
Exactly.
That's just my thought, but that's up to you.
Anytime you do the survey and have an online portion of it, I mean, it's hard to be true and honest, it has to be extensively done and track the URL and know that. Get a response from that URL again, and, you know, that type of thing.
Even, even, even that tracking method can be gained.
Well, I can, but I'm not smart enough to do that, so.
Well, you're, you're smarter than I have to do a Google search on it.
It's, it's simple, what you suggested, person to person. Contact, so just put it on social media that if they wanna participate. And they've been voted at the ballot, they just fill it up and turn it into the town office. If they put it in the box. Doesn't get counted. You know, it's as simple as that. In order for their survey to be counted, it has to be in delivered at the front counter.
We know you're a human being.
Yeah. You just need to explain it to them.
But are you gonna allow them to do it? In November at voting and turn it in at will be.
Sure, oh yeah, yeah, of course.
That's the, you know.
Of course.
Exactly.
But I, you know, I'm on the Economic Development Committee and I had the same concerns.
Yeah, and certainly we can use Facebook to advertise. Get the word out that we are interested in hearing from people. It's just that we're not allowing them to. Electronically, in an, an unsupervised way. Answer the survey.
Do we get a motion to do it?
Probably, because you're, you're asking to spend staff time, so yes, I would appreciate that.
So I, I so move.
Well, seconded. So Jeff made a motion, and Joe seconded it too. Prepare an online survey, uh, to be, uh, not an online survey, a, uh. Cannabis survey to be, uh. Uh, distributed and, uh. Played it, uh. So that people, uh, and, and have people, uh, here with their survey result. Uh, all those in favor? All those in favor doing all this? So there's three in favor and two opposed? Opposed. Thank you.
Chief, can I ask you, Chief Earle, can I ask you, how much of a problem is it in Winthrop Monmouth? People driving while under the influence of marijuana?
It is becoming more problematic in the fact that there are no tests available, roadside tests available. So if you have someone who is under the influence of what we perceive to be maybe marijuana, but it could be other stuff contributing to it. You have to make a determination whether you have enough PC to make the arrest and bring him in, and then you have to call in a technician to come in and sometimes it takes an hour to two hours to call someone in because there aren't very many in the state. And wait for them to get there and then it takes another hour to two hours for them to run their tests and that's provided that the person is being cooperative.
Yeah. And you do traditional field sobriety tests?
Standard standardized field sobriety tests roadside, yeah. Yeah, they would they would have to fail that terribly in order for them to be brought in. We are seeing an uptick in the in the other areas other than alcohol contributing to driving under the influence.
Right. And the test, what is it called? Nice.
Stagnus Gaze.
Does that work?
Yes.
He's in point before state policemen that were just run over.
Was that with drugs?
And I'll tell you, the amount of walking I do on Main Street, you know, when cars drive by me, I can smell cigarette smoke. When there's a single person in a car and they drive by me and I smell marijuana, I don't get a very warm and fuzzy feeling while I'm walking, so.
And it's not just the inebriation that we're seeing. It's just people driving distracted.
Oh, yes. Yeah.
Texting, I mean, I bet we have between fifteen and twenty calls a week of people calling in because their vehicle is being driven all over the road, you know, and they're driving recklessly and going from breakdown lane to settle lane and you stop them and I've inebriated in any form at all. So you know, you know, paying attention, they're texting, they're doing something else, you know.
Yeah. Cigarette, cell phone, steering wheel, you know, there's only so many things you can hold on to, so.
One one other question. I know this is for the town manager. The state law with regard to local recycling at the transfer station is going to change next couple of weeks or so. Have we come up with any suggestions for a safety policy and posting that?
We do. I have a I doubt we're going to be able to implement it that quickly. We're we're once again looking at staffing problems at the transfer station. We don't know to the extent of that. I don't know the extent of that at this time, but one of the employees has found a better full-time job with benefits, so that's it's not, you know, good for him. That's going to leave us shorthanded, so adding more things for them to keep an eye on right now is probably not the best idea, but when we get when we get the staffing, if we can get staffing back up, I think we can implement something at that time. I have suggestions from Dan. He has put together a list of items that that we can bring to you, and I can bring those to you if you want. I just don't think that we'll be able to implement anything where it's going to be under any amount of supervision in the near term until we get the staff back.
You know, this is a big issue for a lot of a lot of people around town. And so perhaps we could put it on our next agenda so that those folks can come and hear and listen and have an understanding of when it is that we might be able to implement it because I think there's a good two or three dozen people that have either talked to the staff at the transfer station or talked to me or talked to I know Mark was getting some comments.
Staff has asked me several times if there's been any update. People are asking them. Of course, they don't have anything to to report.
Right. So if if it's not going to be in the month of September, an implementation date in the month of September, then we should at least have some sort of public hearing and people need to understand why.
We don't expect till October anyway, right? October would be the
When was the adjournment?
October twenty fifth is the, I believe, the date when the the regular
Because they laughed and came back for all the overrides, so they pushed the session into July.
Okay.
Let's see, it's October. It's almost November.
All right, well. People are getting impatient, so it would be helpful to, yeah, it would be helpful to at least for them to see some signs of progress and understand when.
Onto public comment.
My boys are both finished their Eagle project, so very soon we should be moving up to Eagle. Right here, local in town. Then it was down, they reopened Mark's discussion of lifeguard stands getting thrown out in the water. We needed sometimes community. My son, we, that was one of those Eagle project on the lifeguards. We delivered on Sunday.
Please pull the old ones out of the water Sunday.
Yeah. Sunday we had to pull the old ones out of the water. Please, please your mom and P D gave us a nice ask for him, big deal. It kind of broke my heart today to see them out there, you know, not only he took months and months planning this out and then all of a sudden they're in the water. I spent a lot of time helping him. The community has donated money towards this fishing game, the well, back, he has a whole list of everybody. What are we going to do about it? This is the fourth time this week there's been vandalism down there.
Can we can we go back to storing the beach stuff at Public Works like it had been in the past? I feel like we're just letting thousands of dollars get wasted out there.
It's going to be the year, yeah. I think it always
Last year and this year it was not.
Not?
Last year, Dan made the decision to tell me they'd count the beach. That was his decision again this year. But I did ask him earlier today after this incident, if it happened back up, he said he would try and do it. So I didn't talk with Justin this afternoon and asked him if it could happen before the weekend is. You know, I don't want things to keep getting ruined. I'm worried about the fire department stocks down there, you know, and our docks, our docks are worth ten thousand dollars. You know, and that's the next thing you're going to throw in the water. You know, they broke into the bathroom, someone broke into the bathroom.
They moved those guards they have on site, they're heavy.
You know, someone broke into the bathroom and I'm getting a call from, you know, a town person who's there to let me know that someone had broken in and it was like, it was a mess. There were cigarette buses, beer cans, bombster cans, barre cans. You know, there were species everywhere, you know, and I spent a couple hours down there having to clean it up and, you know, unclog a toilet that hopefully we, you know, weren't going to lose. You know, and thankfully I found it before it got cold because if that had sat there all winter, we could have lost plumbing into in a toilet, you know. And that was locked, so someone's, you know, picked the lock because locked. So it's just it's just frustrating. You know, we're putting in a lot of time and effort and it's still happening.
Are there cameras down there? Are any cameras down there?
So we we had some cameras down there during the summer, game cameras. We took them down because they're, you know, it's not locked. Yeah, they're my personal ones. Like I bought them. We were going to buy a surveillance system, but the problem is any kind of surveillance system really needs Wi-Fi to be beneficial for the police to like actually catch them. They need to be able to have Wi-Fi to get the notification. If we don't have Wi-Fi down there. So we could buy a Christmas circuit set of cameras, but then I'm still wasting hours of going down and sitting through of video, you know, so it's really not cost effective, no. So it'd be cost effective for us to see if we can get Wi-Fi down there and put cameras up so that they can just get a ding on their on their cruiser or dish hatch can get the ding and be like, hey, we need someone there now, something's happening. But, you know, I've been I've been doing this job for twenty four years and right now, the amount of vandalism we're having is back in the early two thousands we were having when there was a lot of vandalism and we went to having to get a steel door for the bull house, you know. So I just feel like you can come back around and it's just going to keep happening, happening, happening. I think it's just the time right now. We just need to figure out how to prevent it.
And to piggyback that, I'll say this. We had Eagle Scouts from Jackman come down today to help us get the stands out of the water. Kent showed up. Mark did show up. Luckily, he missed all the heavy lifting. I don't know, planned that or something, joking. But we couldn't even get Public Works to come out and help us get it out of the water. They became town property when he delivered them, so why could we not get Public Works down there? That that was the frustrating part. We had teenage kids out there helping lift it out of the water, but no townspeople other than people in the select board.
My concern as scout masters is that, you know, four percent of scouts make it to Eagle and they do these projects, they're not easy projects for them and lifeguard stands are solid. But now they're there waiting for the next vandalism as like, okay, come and destroy them. What's going to happen Monday morning when we go in and they're all destroyed and he hasn't even made it to his Eagle Board review? I can't have him go out asking for donations to rebuild it. It's not fair to him. He's put over hundreds of hours into this and plus all the volunteers.
Where are they now? Where are they?
They're at the town beach. I don't know, it's he lieutenant now, Sergeant Westling. He had us put them right back where the normal lifeguard stands go, not secure them to the ground. He didn't want them secured to the ground. He wanted them left there. He has a plan. That's what we were told.
Broadcast it on TV, it's not going to work very well.
We don't want
But we don't.
Yeah, and you know, that's that's up. I would leave this to the chief and if the chief says he's handling this, I put my trust in the chief that he's got this under control.
What happens when they're damaged?
Okay, so my question is if they go back and destroy this, who's paying for this? Because I helped MacGyver for BUDs do this.
Well, but we can't interfere with what the police have planned. That's my feeling. I mean, I I don't think that we can broadcast what his plan is because obviously then
He never told us of a plan. He just said, I have a plan. What's your plan?
Well, I need to know what the plan is. The bigger question is, are they going to, is the town going to fix them? Or is he going to be responsible to have to go back and fix them again and again and again? We already fixed them today. On top of pulling them out of the water.
My opinion, once they become town property, I mean, I have gone down there at the request of the rec director to do repairs to stuff at the facility. So once, I mean, it's just like the town building, it's town old stuff and if it gets damaged, then it will need to get repaired. Be no different if it was any other town building or town property. That's my opinion.
I wonder if, you know, as the person who was somewhat skeptical of putting a whole lot of investment in surveillance earlier on in the year, if we are continuing to have a problem, that maybe we need to ask the town manager to look into coming to us with a proposal and perhaps a budget impact of some sort of Wi-Fi system that would allow us to protect the town assets in a way that makes sense and is lowest cost.
I defer to what the what the police department wants. If they they want, you know, if the chief and his staff think that that's a good idea, then certainly I'm not an expert in this.
And as a devil's advocate, even having a Wi-Fi surveillance surveillance system does no good proof and point everything that went on in Winthrop because they just went and cut the phone line, which is where it's coming from. So nothing was recorded. There's always a way around.
There's some very inexpensive game cameras on the market that you link right to a cell phone that are motion activated. You get an instant alert that something's going on. I mean, if you're getting an alert at six o'clock at night, no big deal. If you get one at ten thirty, it's probably worth going to take a look. And they're not, they're very inexpensive, very inexpensive plans. Maybe something for the future.
Now, they and women police department are going through and they're checking all the boat launches and all beaches. And they're throwing complaint numbers on it every time they do. So, I mean, we can track when they're going through, you know. They're not finding, other than other than down at the Cobbe See Boat Launch, which is right down off the road. We very seldomly find anybody after midnight at this public beach down here. So everything that's going on is going on early evening.
Shortly after dark. I guess I would suggest that you know, we we give it another select board meeting and and if if there's something that we can do as a select board to do a better job of protecting town assets, then we rely on your guys' advice and let us know what the budget impact might be. I mean, at this point, it's impacting our budget anyway. We've got to send somebody to fix stuff.
And of course, I like to see them, everything moved up to town garage. Easier to keep an eye on stuff.
Not setting out the elements either, so I mean, the stuff that's out there is just sitting there with, it gets snow and trees can fall on it. It's not covered.
Do that. Get the stuff moved
down garage. I think Dan said that he would do that, but I know Daniel right now just wants it moved at the moment.
When appropriate.
Yes.
Any other other comment?
Nobody Zoomly under their hand.
Sure, they're real people.
Then on to consider appointing a select board member to the comprehensive land committee.
You saw the the email from Steve O'Donnell and at the when they're the last time they met to McDonald's on the the select board and he was the representative, so I think he's looking for one of you to volunteer to serve in that role.
No, I can't.
That would be nepotism.
I don't think you have to, but I just kind of keep wanting you to have the pulse on where they're going with it.
What they're scheduled is when, is that a monthly meeting or a bi-week?
I don't think they're quite sure yet. Steve has a phone call. So in your in your email, it did mention that Ben had had some other people. He put them in contact with the with the city planner, Sako, who says she has some time It did mention that Ben had had fa- had some other people, he put them in contact with the with the city planner, Saco, who says she has some time. Uh, to help them, so once they, once they have that discussion, I think they might know more about her availability and when she might be able to. Help, um. Ben's firm is a planning firm, so they're very expensive and they, uh, they throw a lot of resources at it quickly to get it done, he doesn't have a lot of. Time, so this will probably be kind of a less expensive. Model. So I expect it'll take a little bit longer, but. Hopefully it will kind of move in a. In a methodical way and it won't kind of keep falling apart, you know, as as it has in the past, so. I don't know exactly, I wouldn't suspect it would probably be more than once a month. Yes. I can do that, because where they are now, you kind of have a rough thing that kind of needs to be cobbled together.
You have.
You know, with some experience of a professional is what is what they need, so.
Depending what day of the month it fell on, I could probably do that. If they can accommodate my schedule, since I do know quite a few. Fire to the fire. Glad to be willing to do that as long as it's been into my schedule.
You're, are you on?
Yeah. Nobody said no, I mean, that was codes officer, that's the last time we met.
I think the plan is, once they get this person on board and they kind of know where they're going, I think. And Steve will reach out to the committee and see how many of them are willing to still serve and if we need more people, we'll come back to you. If I want to do it or whatever.
I make a motion, we appoint Mark Purges to the comprehensive plan committee.
Both motion by Chris, second by Joe to appoint. Mark Purges to the. Uh, comprehensive plan committee, all those in favor. And Mark.
If my wife had a vote, she would vote no, she's not a.
I'm the same. So. You can't be there. We're working together, Mark.
I'll tell her I didn't vote.
To consider updating the general assistance ordinance and general assistance maximums.
That's the updated ordinance right there, I told you I'd bring it, it's very boilerplate, MMA puts together. All all municipalities, but use that, they 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 copy and use that, this is one of the few ordinances that. As a select board, you can approve, you don't need to go to the the voters to approve that ordinance, it's a. In state law, it allows you to do that, and then the second item is this appendix which changes every year. And it's just the maximum for each category in GA that can be offered out, so that just needs, that's an annual thing, that's a once every. I don't know, whenever the legislature changes something, it has to be updated, but.
You often do it.
Yeah.
So it's. The maximum that you can allot for.
For a particular purpose, yeah, if you want, if you want this copy, you can, if you want to take a look at. It breaks down the categories that are eligible for for GA and it it just puts in what the maximum amount that you can offer.
And presently, we don't have anybody on GA.
Not anybody long term, we haven't, I I've not gone in a while here, I mean, people come in occasionally to get, you know. Their electric bill paid or something like that, but nothing.
I make a motion, we approve updating the general assistance ordinance and general assistance maximums.
Second.
So, uh, Chris has made a motion, Ken seconded. To update the general assistance ordinance and general assistance maximums. All those in favor? Uh, next, to consider the contract. April first. Twenty twenty five property tax right revaluation.
So this here is is a boilerplate, um, contract, the state sets these up and firms kind of. They kind of put them in their own font, however they like to see them. They add a few things, the the only thing that I would say that, um, is not necessarily a concern, but I I I just wanted to point it out is. Under the compensation in terms, it has a liquidated damage amount of fifty dollars per day, I've seen that as high as a hundred and fifty. So if you're, if you're comfortable with fifty, what that means is if they don't. If they don't turn in the product on the day in which it's due, they start incurring a penalty of fifty dollars a day, that's that's not. It's not unstandard, but I just wanted you to know that i- in some place, in some places, it's up to a hundred and fifty dollars a day. This is a very reputable firm, they usually turn things in on time, I I don't envision there being a, an issue there, but I just wanted to make you aware.
So it's fifteen hundred, the penalty would be fifteen hundred dollars a month, essentially.
Yeah.
Uh, on a. Two hundred thousand dollar contract.
Yep, uh, so we also have retainage. So we hold back fifteen percent until until the project is done, so we are holding that too, this is just. If they meet, if they miss their milestones with Donna about. Sending out, uh, the initial, uh, notices to taxpayers, if they start missing those things, it's fifty dollars a day for each occurrence. In which they're delinquent.
Okay, so it's not just fifty dollars a day at the end, it's fifty dollars.
Right. For the major milestones at the end, yes, that's correct.
Gotcha. So fifteen hundred dollars a month.
Make a motion, we approve. Um, the contract for April first twenty twenty five property tax reval- revaluation.
Second.
So it's a motion by Chris, second by Ken. Who a- approve the contract for the first twenty twenty five. Property tax revaluation.
Mr. Chair, just before before we vote, one one question. All right, so how many milestones do they have?
Major milestones. There's a lot, but uh, uh, some of them are just kind of. You know, they're like, they're like FYI kind of issues, the ones, the the ones that we're talking about is, is the final valuations. Um, the impact notices, the informal hearings, uh, the the hearing reviews and then final product, it's those, it's a last. Few that are are really important, the ones kind of in there, they're just kind of giving you rough estimates of when that's going to. And if we don't see anything until we get down to the, uh, to the final valuations, we won't have a product until they get to that point, it's all, it's all their issue with that. The rest of that.
So this penalty would accumulate. If they don't get back on track?
Correct.
So they would, they they might pay a penalty if they're late on something. And then. It would have an incentive to sort of get themselves.
Yes. Yep.
Because otherwise it would be double penalized if they're. Continuing to fall behind.
Yes, and sometimes those penalties are just used so that they're upfront about their delay, because if it's not going to impact anything, Donna may. She may say. No, I understand that, that's not a problem, just try to get it to me by. X, it just makes it so they have to have a conversation, they can't just kind of go off track and not tell anybody, that's really the point of it, okay.
All those in favor of. Chris's motion, and Ken's second.
Thank you, and I can just get Judy signing that, because it's your, you're one of the excesses.
Uh, next to consider to, uh. Proven number twenty, number five for twenty three, twenty four.
Yeah. Just upside down. Perseran protective clo- clothing, fire department. One thousand nine hundred ninety six dollars, Blue Rock Earthworks Materials Transport, two thousand five hundred and sixty four. DJ's Municipal Supply. Uh, uh, Road Patch, three thousand five hundred and eighty, Dennis K. Burke. Fuel, one thousand seven hundred twenty three. GDI Services Inc., Cleaning Company, three thousand one hundred and eighteen. Any polarization consultants, the assessment of two thousand four hundred and thirty seven dollars. Main waste to energy tipping fees, five thousand one hundred dollars. RSU, two, three months of, uh, RSU payments, one thou- one million five hundred and forty nine thousand three hundred and seventy eight dollars. State of Maine Bureau Motor Vehicles. Seven thousand two hundred and four, for a grand total of one million five hundred and eighty five thousand six hundred and seventy three dollars and eight cents.
Make a motion, we approve warrant number five for fiscal year twenty.
Promotion by Ken, second by Mark to approve warrant number five. All those in favor?
Thank you. Oh, just a draft, it's going to go out tomorrow. Just wanted you, you all. You can say it out loud too much, but. Should be circulated.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Before we adjourn, question, um. You have a sense of when we might see, well, actually two things. Uh, the. Proposal on the transfer station where we might be.
Looking probably in another month, you know, I would thank you, okay.
And then, uh, you have a sense of when we might see the audit? For the most recent fiscal year?
It won't be till, well, it won't be the most recent, it'll be last year, so, um, it'll come. It'll probably be sometime in November, I think, I think they're starting, I think they're, they're engaging us in middle of October, something like that, so hopefully by November.